Check us out. Apologize for my hair. I had a rough hair morning.
I'm sorry, I was talking to Frank out there.
Oh, that's all right. That's all right.
You don't have to apologize for me about hair.
Fair enough.
Like I said yesterday, you know, because they were making fun because it was like three or four bald guys and me. And I said, listen, God, you know, can't be short and bald.
He got the short jean, not the bald jean. I got the bald jean, so.
Ah, it's all good. It's all good in this October. A couple of things came up in that news report Noah just gave mentioning that the pit racing complex reports of it closing. What have you guys heard about that?
I heard it in the bathroom.
I've gotten no notice of that at all, so.
Talking about the facility up in Wampum. Well, Big Beaver, I guess that would be.
Big Beaver Borough, yeah, right on the border there.
That's a real shame because it's a nice venue.
That's a real jewel.
We had some really good events up there in the past. I've attended many good events up there and.
We're actually involved in an event there next Saturday, the car, the garage tour two point oh. We're involved in that where people will drive around and see, you know, cool cars.
Push had put that on and they were one of the destinations. So, yeah, so I'll definitely look into it and see what's, what's up there. But the staff family's been great for the area and that raceway is, I thought, done pretty well with, especially with some of the, the big motorcycle events and all the other stuff.
I know a lot of hotels, like the Ben Breakfast, for instance, in Brighton Township, they get a lot of people, a lot of their people who stay there overnight are going to that racetrack to test motorcycles or test cars. I remember being in Jackson's Restaurant once and by the Beaver Valley Mall and a whole group of racers came in and they were, you know, having dinner there. So I know it pumps money into the economy.
Yeah, yeah. Several of the hotels locally, the Hilton Garden, they're in center, obviously benefited from a lot of these events.
Another item that came up, Noah, was at your work session yesterday, the credit card charges and, you know, a question if some of those charges are properly done. Well, what came out of that? Is there a further discussion or where do we go from here?
Well, it's a conversation that the controller's had with us before. My position, I won't speak over Tony or Dan, but I'm not here to micromanage another elected row officials, row officers budget expenses. She's there as a controller to do those things, but we've had the conversation. I don't know what's a campaign contribution by definition. I guess we'll look into that. But I'm not going to micromanage any of it, whether it's Tony Guy or Tracy Patton or whoever it is. That's not.
Because his name's on it. I mean, prior DAs have done that. Just, I don't want to use any names, but we mail out ninety-three thousand envelopes for ninety-three thousand parcels with another envelope in it with an elected official's name on it. Doesn't say elect either. Why is that not a problem and this a problem?
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot of gray area, obviously, with that stuff, but that's, that's kind of.
I remember getting dog license applications. They would always have.
Well, it always has a treasurer's name on it. Yeah, it goes way back.
Doesn't say elect or vote. There was a court case, we heard Buckley versus Valero or something.
Yeah.
Has magic words. It has the, the magic word is, has to say elect, reelect, vote for those kinds of statements.
Commissioner Camp joining us now. We were talking about a couple of items, the, what turned out at the work session about the credit card charges and some questions about that. Anything you want to weigh in, weigh in on there?
I caught Commissioner Manning, Commissioner Mendoza's statement on the inside, but I would agree, you know, this has been something that the controller's brought up to us a couple of months ago. We've been looking into it. Our law department has advised us on what the law states. You know, whether we look at the credit card policy as a whole is what was requested. That's okay. But moving forward, you know, I think this thing needs to be put to rest. The controller has the right to do what she wants with it by turning it into proper authorities. If they come back and determine that District Attorney Bible wasn't wrong, then we will support going after those funds to be refunded to the county. But as Commissioner Amadeus said, you know, those words elect, support, reelect, vote, you know, those weren't on those marketing materials and the district attorney does go to a lot of events, you know, I don't know if Commissioner May said he goes to the app program. He goes to the, you know, he's out.
Recovery walks.
They are out everywhere.
Anything out in the community, the district attorney's table is there.
Yeah.
Trying to promote good community relations with the folks that rely on the district attorney.
We have a new policy that has the word networking in it, but that, that was to curb the directors from traveling here and there on their own whim. We network. That's what we do. The intent of that was never to stop elected officials. You know, every elected official is an independent contractor that we don't control. We barely control ourselves, let alone control what they do.
People want to see their, their government officials. They want to know, you know, there's a connection.
Just because we're an event and we turn mileage in, it's not like the old days when they had cars.
And Dan, another thing we talked about, just the report about the Pittsburgh Racing Complex and Big Beaver perhaps closing. Have you heard anything about that? That just came up.
We just heard. Yeah, no, I haven't. I haven't heard that.
It seems like we've been talking budget for a long time now and we've definitely got to get into that.
We're the only level of government around that has a budget.
Right, right.
Well, the only one that's apparently working right now is right here on the radio talking to you, Scott.
You know why? Because we can work together. We don't always agree, but we get things done.
Ah, amen to that.
I do think, I do think it, again, it reinforces the true testament that the most effective government is the local government that works together to get things done for the benefit of people. And the state and federal just can't get out of their own way. And it's frustrating to all of us. I still have no clue when the state budget's going to be passed and the stalemate is the federal level. But, but it is going to impact, we were just talking about housing and stuff before the program started. The housing authorities and the people that were working with the homeless and the people that are doing emergency sheltering and the people trying to help people get rent and rent assistance and stuff. All that flows through from, usually from HUD and flows through the state down to Harrisburg and then comes to us to kind of help where the rubber hits the road. And it's going to create a lot of pain and it's getting close to that here in Beaver County.
Now, with the state budget and the stalemate there, how have you seen that trickle down or, you know, any effects?
There are school districts in our county that have, they're like short millions and millions of dollars, three months' worth of payments and they haven't gotten them. I mean, I don't know how long they can do that, maintain that. What are they going to start doing? Laying people off, closing days? I don't know how they're going to handle that.
Dan can talk about this because I know he's had some inquiries from the press and stuff. West Moreland County, I think Armstrong County have had some drastic measures, but, you know.
Yeah, so we're fortunate at the county. It's not hitting us, you know, the work that our departments and elected officials do. We have, do have a reserve that we're able to tap into until some of those funds for the human services come through that we don't have to, you know, go out and borrow money. But as Commissioner Amadeus, Commissioner Mann both said, we're starting to see the southwestern Pennsylvania region really take effect, whether it's in the school district or with these counties that they're starting to furlough, they're closing their parks, you know, laying off maintenance workers, so they don't have to take care of the parks. We don't have to do that here. But as Commissioner Mendoza said, we're starting to get some calls of support to go out and support our school districts because they're the ones that are really hurting, you know, sixty, ninety days of back, back, back bills that, you know, their vendors are graciously, you know, holding because they understand the situation. They know at the end of the day, they're going to get paid. It's just a matter of when and where. But, you know, it's important that, I mean, you talk to our legislators, we talk to them. It's important that they get back to Harrisburg. Ours are there, but it's important that leadership gets back to Harrisburg and says, hey, we got to get this done, not only for the Commonwealth as a whole, but our, each individual region, so.
There's so many employees that live pay to pay.
Yeah.
Cash flow is an issue for small businesses, for nonprofits especially, and employees. I feel for some of those federal workers who are being laid off, expected to show up for work, but they're not going to pay for it. That's a tough situation.
You're joining us here at Beaver County Radio with Ask the Commissioners. We do have a couple of calls and we'll take one right now. If you guys want to get your headphones on, phone lines open, seven two four eight four three one eight eight eight. Good morning. Welcome to Ask the Commissioners.
Happy Thursday, gentlemen. Commissioners, welcome to the radio station.
Thank you.
Good morning.
I've been listening here and I think you already answered the question I had. With the budget impacts in Harrisburg, which is causing all kinds of problems, and I know from listening to you guys every month that you say about how much of your money is passed through money. It comes from one government agency and you see it gets where it needs to go. And my question was, I think you answered it, one of our neighboring counties, West Moreland County, I think it is, I heard yesterday, is furloughing county employees because of the budget impasse. If I understood you correctly, you say that's not a possibility in Beaver County?
Not at this time. I wouldn't say it's not a possibility because it depends on how long this takes.
I mean, I, I can't imagine this go, what was the longest one? Maybe it went to the end of the year one time, the calendar year. It would have to go a ways past that, I think, before. We have some line of credits we can tap into. We're fiscally sound, but all of those flow through monies, obviously, we can't handle on our, on our own. But it would take a drastic delay well beyond, I think, the end of the year before we'd have to get into the furlough issue. We might, might have to tap into a line of credit or borrow some money, but it's hard for me to imagine we'd get to that point.
Okay, it was said, it was brought up on the talk show yesterday, like if you have to borrow money, would that be an interest-free situation or would you have to pony up?
Absolutely not.
They usually try and provide some special low-interest loans, but that they're still interest, you're going to have to pay back.
We've been in that situation before and we had to eat the interest.
Okay, well, I want to thank you guys for doing a real tough job in a real tough time. So keep doing a good work and I appreciate the fact that you guys work together.
Thank you. Thanks for the call.
Yes, thank you. You too. We have another caller on hold since you got your headphones on. Hello, welcome to Beaver County Radio. You're on the air?
Yes, hello?
Yes.
What is the current, I'm sorry, my question is, what is the current status of Sheriff Tony Guy's request for a two eight seven G agreement with ICE, Immigration and Customs Enforcement?
Yeah, so there is a group of individuals who attend our meetings biweekly or almost weekly to get an update. At this time, we are still waiting to hear back from the sheriff on whether or not the federal government has been approved. He filled the application out. He turned those documents in. They then will return them back to us on whether or not, and that's, at that time, we'll determine whether or not the Board of Commissioners will sign off on that agreement. On the eastern part of the Commonwealth, you know, there's some counties that are going through lawsuits in regards to this, but also there are, there's funding that is tied into this that could be withheld if we do not participate in this program. One is that will affect our homeless coalition that we met with representatives from them last week. So it's something that we have to take into, we have to think about before we make a decision on this. But this time, the status of it is, is still in a holding pattern because we haven't heard back from the sheriff or the federal government on whether or not his application has been accepted.
Yeah, very good. Yeah, he hung up and I guess you gave him the answer he wanted. So we're going to go to a break, come back with more. Got a question for the Commissioners? Give us a buzz at seven two four eight four three one eight eight eight.
Want to make football season better than ever this year? Plan now to join your friends at The Hanger in Moon Township, the place where good times and great food meet. Watch your favorite sporting event on one of their eighteen big screen TVs while you enjoy their famous wings, beer battered fish, pizza, or Taco Tuesdays indoors or on the outdoor patio. Check out their award-winning menu online for lunch, dinner, or a special night out. This football season, hang out with your friends at The Hanger, the best kept secret in Moon Township at five hundred Flaherty Run Road.
Tune in every Saturday morning at eight thirty AM for another insightful edition of Living Well, a special segment on Beaver County Radio, designed to help you enjoy the best, most fulfilling and healthiest life possible. Hosted by Dr. Joseph Maroon and Jeff Boast, and presented by St. Barnabas. Living Well, Saturday mornings at eight thirty, right here on Beaver County Radio, WBVP Beaver Falls, WNBA Ambridge, along with ninety-nine point three FM and ninety-five point seven FM.
We're talking with Art Cornell from Beaver Cemetery in Mausoleum. Art, tell us about the cremation garden at Beaver Cemetery.
Our cremation garden is a very affordable burial option for families choosing cremation. Burial in our cremation garden provides a sixty-two percent savings over a traditional burial.
Why do some families choose cremains burial over options like a decorative urn in their home?
More people today are opting for something long-lasting. They want the ease and lower cost of cremation, but still want to memorialize their loved ones in a more permanent way.
And your cremation garden gives them an affordable way to do this?
Yes. In addition to a sixty-two percent savings over traditional burial, our cremation garden gives families a place to visit today and preserves their family heritage for generations. And everything your family owns at Beaver Cemetery will be protected by our perpetual care fund.
Friends, you can learn more at beavercemetery.net.
The NASCAR Craftsman Truck Series.
Green flag is out. Heim gets a good jump.
Playoff round of eight.
Boy, Chandler Smith's truck washed way up the racetrack, nearly got into Corey Heim, and they're spinning at mid-pack.
Begins at the Charlotte Roval.
Corey Heim has had another one of those afternoons when he just cannot be beat. He comes out of turn number four.
It's the Craftsman Truck Series from the Roval.
Lincoln Park Performing Arts Center in Midland opens its twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six season with the award-winning comedy classic, Guys and Dolls, October third through the twelfth, sponsored by Clearview Federal Credit Union. For tickets, visit lincolnparkarts.org.
Beaver County Radio and Fry Transportation are on the move and they're coming your way with the best Beaver County has to offer. You're listening to Beaver County Radio, proudly presented by Fry Transportation.
Enjoy a spooktacular night of fun Thursday, October twenty-third at Jackson's Restaurant in Monaca. A Halloween-themed celebration filled with live music, ghoulish costumes, and festive spirits awaits. The best costume wins a Jackson's gift card. Make your reservations on Open Table or by contacting Jackson's directly at jacksonsbeavervalley.com. Located adjacent to Hilton Garden Inn by the Beaver Valley Mall, Jackson's is the place this Halloween season to eat, drink, and be scary.
Put freedom in your future. Freedom United Federal Credit Union in Rochester.
Coming at you from the Fry Transportation Group Studios, it is Ask the Commissioners and a question I wanted to ask you fellows. Notice in Vampore Township, there's a big foundation that's building the hillside there behind where the car dealership is. What's, what's happening there?
Well, I'm not sure what's happening behind the dealership, but I know there's speculation that the Sheetz was going in there. I haven't seen any further progress and it looks like there's either some remediation or some fill, clean fills, something's happening there. It looks like it's in preparation for something to happen. But that's, that's, these guys know more. That's, that's the latest that I've, I've seen and heard.
And we did have one development open, the Chippewa Township, the long-awaited Sheetz is open there.
That, that place is already a gold mine, it looks like. As those places tend to be, the Getco in Center, when that opened, that thing's been gangbusters. It's all Toys R Us and stuff. That's, that's done.
People need to get acclimated. There were a couple of fender benders on opening day. We saw that. So is it a matter of?
Here's the most interesting thing on that, Scott. So, so I went to it and they were selling regular gas, eighty-seven octane gas for three dollars and nineteen cents. Which was at least thirty cents cheaper than what gas was like three forty-nine. Then I left that and drove the three seventy-six coming back to the office. The Marathon Store was selling gas for three dollars and nineteen cents. The Getco was selling gas at three dollars and nineteen cents. So the whole time they put that promotional thing on, the two competing gas stations on fifty-one had lowered their price. I think it's back up to the three forty range.
Reminds me of the early seventies.
But exactly. Yeah, Tony and I both lived through.
The license plates, the odd even numbers and all that.
Odd even license plates.
You don't want that again. But it's good to see that Sheetz open and there are talking some other things opening as well.
Yeah, and then, you know, we're hoping the rest of the development happens there. Although, although the Starbucks, I was telling folks earlier, the new CEO of Starbucks apparently has put a hold on new construction and examining stuff. And I believe there's plans to close up to three hundred Starbucks.
Including a couple in Pittsburgh.
There's a couple in Pittsburgh that I heard about. So it seems to have put on hold, may put on hold, future development there. But as a non-coffee drinker, I'm, I'm not all that concerned about it.
I live off it these days, but.
Tony's got Panera, so he's fine.
This is my drug of choice. I got off of demon nicotine with coffee and I've been drinking coffee since.
That's a tall one. I like it. Yeah. Now, I always ask a couple of other developments. I'm always curious about Northern Lights. People always wondering anything there or Beaver Valley Mo. Any, any updates? Did you hear of anything new or good news, bad news somewhere in between?
Nothing specific on Northern Lights at all. Same owners are still listed as the owners. We don't know what their future plans on. Obviously, they've demoed some stuff. They prepared the ground to build stuff, but I haven't heard anything definitive. There's a new tractor supply that just opened as well up in Franklin.
Off of two eighty-eight or?
Yeah, up that way. There's a lot, a lot of new stores happening on the outskirts, a lot of the new Dollar Generals, you know, popping up and stuff, which are good because many of our rural areas don't have immediate close access.
It's one opened in Hookstown a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah. And Jack, you just wrote an op-ed piece that we ran on beavercountyradio.com expressing, you know, you have some optimism. You're kind of bullish for Beaver County and the economy.
I think we all are bullish for Beaver County. That's why, part of why we're here. That's part of why we want to serve. Yeah, there's been a lot of great development up and down the Ohio River. We've got more interests than I've seen since before Shell announced up there. We've, we've talked about the, the potential of the Bruce Mansfield site being reconverted back into a power generating facility and a hyperscale data center happening there. One of the companies that I didn't talk about in my, my op-ed was Versatech in, in Alakippa. We were there for a ribbon cutting there, forty million dollar investment. There are eighty new jobs and they're continuing to look to even expand beyond that. So a lot, a lot of good business development, a lot of good family sustaining jobs on, on their way.
Yeah, I recently got back from what was called a DC fly-in with Elagati Conference and SBC. And each county was permitted seven minutes to brag up your county and talk about your county, what's happening, what was going on. I mean, it was an honor to be there. It was, it was in the Capitol in the Senate side. There was a group of maybe fifty people in the room. I got to talk about all the development and everything that, that transpired and, and the biggest factor is energy right now in our county, as well as a lot of the other counties. Felt really good about being there. I mean, when I was a teacher, I used to take kids and tour and we toured the Capitol, go through all of it. And there I was on county business, speaking to a delegation of, from the House and from the Senate and it was just.
What'd you tell them? What was your elevator pitch for Beaver County?
Well, just basically not, don't cut anything, especially when the development that's going on. Told them about what was happening basically in shipping port, Versatech and, and all the buildings that are, that are developing. And we, we need the funding from the federal government and without that funding, we're not going to be able to progress. The county can't afford it. The municipality that, the businesses are being built can't afford it. It has to come from the federal government. And I'm talking about tens of thousands of dollars. I'm talking about millions and millions and millions.
Now, how are we on infrastructure? One thing I, I thought of the other day, it didn't seem like there was as much road construction as I've seen in years past, not as many detours, not as many lane closures. And maybe I, maybe I'm wrong about that, but I didn't see as much paving or work as that.
Sixty-eighth, it seems to have gone on forever. Some people up in that part of the county, we had the bridge closures, the Rochester, Monaca Bridge.
Yeah, Monaca still has some road construction done, but I've noticed they've been, they've been doing it at nighttime. They have crews on the night shift now working to help the flow of traffic during the day.
Oh, that's right up by where the Tripway Building is.
Yeah, so, and then obviously Rochester, you know, I think that project's going to go until about twenty twenty-seven. They're moving in phases. They were in front of the school, whenever the school, whenever school started. Now they're up towards St. Cecilius Church and continuing to move towards New Brighton there. But no, you're correct. Our infrastructure seems to be pretty, pretty well. But, you know, these municipalities will always continue.
Sure.
To, you know, put stuff on the, on the TIF and try and get roadwork done as everything needs to, because if you wait too long, you're going to be out of luck.
Yeah, but most of the complaints we do get, and I see myself, is more municipal pothole issue with back roads and that kind of stuff that don't get chipped and charred or repaved very often, unless there's a pipeline upgrade or something like Broadhead Road went through that over a year ago. Pretty much anytime you got a long Broadhead going through.
It took five years to get to that point of construction. Now, we sit on, on those boards and Danny mentioned the TIF, Transportation Improvement Plan, the tip. And before anything can get done, we have to get it on that tip. And that's not the easiest thing to do. And then we have our, our local public, it's called, they're called PPPs where people from the county can come in and testify what they think we need to do. We have one of those coming up here, I think, next month.
Yeah, it's in November.
November.
Where, where's that at or how does?
It'll be at the courthouse, at the Commissioner's meeting room.
You have a lot of borough managers and township supervisors that will come in.
Yeah, public presentation panels and they have people come in and just, we, we try and have a diverse set of people from different regions of the county come in and let us know what, what the issue is. Some of them are small bridges that cross a creek somewhere. Some are major, you know.
Major river crossings.
Road widening.
So is this planning ahead for next spring or?
Five years.
This goes out quite a ways. I mean, we've, we've talked before here about the Alakippa Ambridge Bridge. Eventually going to need some replacement. That's one thing we managed to get on there, but it's a couple of, and, and there you talk about some serious money.
Back in the day, it was two hundred and eighty million. I'm hearing it's like four hundred, maybe five hundred million dollars.
Wow.
By the time they even get plans, it'll probably be close to a billion.
Isn't the hundredth anniversary of that bridge coming up or?
Yeah, twenty-six. It was when it, when it was constructed, then next year will be the hundredth anniversary.
There's a deadline right there. We'll get it done by, easy for me to say.
We put some money in there about five, six years ago.
There's been some repairs that have lengthened the timeline to do that, but.
We'll hear more from the Commissioners. We have Noah here now with news.
Beaver County Radio's news source, ninety-nine point three FM, twelve thirty WBVP, and beavercountyradio.com. Here's Noah Haswell.
Good morning. On this Thursday, October second of two thousand twenty-five, we will have a complete Beaver County radio weather forecast after we take this look at news. The ATF agent that shot and killed eighteen-year-old Kendrick Curtis of Alakippa in Alakippa on September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five will not, will now not get criminal charges against him. According to an announcement from Beaver County District Attorney Nate Bible in a press conference yesterday, Curtis fired two shots with a stolen handgun at a vehicle carrying three law enforcement officers before he was shot and killed by a federal ATF agent. This incident happened in the area of Wogaman Street and Tyler Street on September eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Bible confirmed that Curtis fired two rounds at the ATF agent and one of those rounds was lodged in the door of the front passenger of the vehicle. This caused the agent to fire back at Curtis, which ended up killing Curtis. Bible claimed that Curtis was not eligible to possess a handgun, nor was he eligible to obtain a concealed carry permit legally because he was eighteen years old. A stabbing occurred early yesterday morning in Alakippa and police were investigating this incident. Superior Avenue was where this incident occurred and the time of this incident was around twelve twenty AM yesterday. The victim of this stabbing was taken to the hospital. There was no word of any arrests initially. Yesterday, Beaver County Coroner David J. Gabauer was called to a crash in New Swickley Township. According to emergency dispatchers, two vehicles and a motorcycle got involved in a crash on Crow's Run Road. Four forty PM yesterday was when this crash was reported. Police also confirmed that Crow's Run Road between Route sixty-five and Freedom Crider Road closed temporarily. No other details about this crash have been released and an investigation into this incident continued last night. According to a Facebook post from elwoodcity.org on Tuesday, the borough of Elwood City, in conjunction with Penn Power, is planning a borough-wide power outage on Sunday, October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, beginning at seven thirty AM. This outage will happen that whole day and four PM that day is when power is expected to be restored. This is to ensure that all residents from Elwood City Borough are safe. The link to this Facebook post, in some ways you can prepare for this outage, can be found on our website at beavercountyradio.com. Pennsylvania State Police at the Rivers Casino in Pittsburgh reported yesterday that twenty-five-year-old Joseph Barana of Pittsburgh was arrested on September twenty-third, two thousand twenty-five for a theft at the Rivers Casino in Pittsburgh early that morning. Barana stole something from twenty-five-year-old Gage Nicholson of Youngstown, Ohio, at the Rivers Casino in Pittsburgh. The investigation into this incident is being investigated by the Pennsylvania State Police. And Jane Goodall, the conservationist renowned for her groundbreaking chimpanzee field research and globe-spanning environmental advocacy, has died. She was ninety-one. The Jane Goodall Institute announced her death yesterday, saying she died of natural causes while in California on a US-speaking tour. Goodall is best remembered for living among chimpanzees in Africa decades ago and documenting the animals using tools and doing other activities previously believed to be exclusive to humans. She also noted their distinct personalities. Her observations and subsequent magazine and documentary appearances in the nineteen sixties transformed how the world perceived not only humans as closest living biological relatives, but also the emotional and social complexity of all animals.
Here's the Beaver County Forecast.
Another day of sunshine is in store for us. We'll see highs of seventy-five and overnight lows around forty-nine. Sunny again tomorrow. Look for highs in the upper seventies and lows around forty-eight. And some areas of patchy fog to start the day on Saturday. Otherwise, we can expect to see lots of sunshine with highs near eighty and lows around fifty. I'm Lisa Marie with your Beaver County weather.
On this Thursday, October the second of two thousand twenty-five, at thirty-five minutes after nine, we've got a temperature of fifty-eight degrees currently in Beaver County. That's a look at the news for now. I'm Noah Haswell on ninety-nine point three FM, AM twelve thirty WBVP, ninety-five point seven FM, and fourteen sixty AM. WMBI also streaming live around the world at beavercountyradio.com.
Thank you, Noah. When you were doing the news, first thing I do always go to my phone, see if I have any messages. And I saw an article, Pittsburgh Patch, talking about that shipping port industrial park project. And then the numbers, I guess I didn't realize the numbers we're talking about that development, six billion with a B in economic activity, creating more than fifteen thousand construction jobs and three hundred and forty full-time jobs. Are those the numbers you're hearing and kind of impact would that have?
I've heard varying numbers, but just like with the Shell project, we'll see, see what actually materializes. But I, I know the initial investment that the Frontier Group talked about was three point two billion just for the conversion of, of the, the power plant. And then obviously, I don't know what it will take for the hyperscale data center, which is going to be in the billions.
For artificial intelligence, is that right?
It's data, data storage, data collection. There'll be several subcontractors that will be part of that. I mean, anybody that has stuff on the cloud and any organization that processes and uses a lot of the data, it's, it's all about.
And data centers require a lot of power, a lot of power.
I did a story on that yesterday talking about, that's one of the reasons Decane Lights raising rates, actually. They're saying it's, it's a demand thing and yeah.
Yeah. Well, that's why, the good thing about this one is they're going to generate the power that's going to run the data center. I don't think any data center will get approved unless it has a dedicated power source coming with it. Because you can't pull that off the grid and still continue to keep the lights on for people.
Well, do you think there'd be spin-off businesses from this, as we saw with Shell?
I would expect there'd be some, yeah. I would expect there'd be some. I mean, you know, downtown Pittsburgh's dotted with small data-oriented centers and stuff with Google and different people, so.
Just happy about the jobs right now.
Yeah, right.
The construction jobs, I'd say, are also huge for this area.
Excellent. All right, joined by the Ask the Commissioners. I have a question for them. Give us a call, seven two four eight four three one eight eight eight. Any pet projects you guys are working on? Dan, I'll start with you. Anything, next few months, it's.
No, you know, we're just working on the budget right now. Corey Troutman from Susquehanna Accounting Consulting, our consultant who helps us prepare the budget has been in and out of the courthouse. So it's one of the things we're going to be working on. We have our date set to be able to pass the proposed and then, and then, you know, to, to accept it in December. So that's really what's taking, going place right now in the courthouse.
Promoting the county, that's what we've been doing. We're up every day, every weekend.
Where are you going to be this weekend? There's so much going on. There's so many fall festivals and outdoor activities. I'm, I'm myself, I'm trying to think, am I going to be here or there?
Yeah, I, I, there's like four or five different events.
Right, right.
We'll be over at the Vanport one you were talking about earlier this morning.
Fairview, I think, or something.
We'll definitely stop by.
The Touch a Plane at CCBC. We've been talking a lot about the Beaver County Airport and all the things going on there. They had that nice event, the, the drive and fly. And I gotta be honest, I hadn't been out to that airport in, in years and a lot of activity, a lot of hangers are busy, a lot of planes and is that, is that a growing facility, the airport? And are there future plans to expand it even more?
Well, I don't think it'll be expanded. There's some limitations there. I mean, the, the future of that airport is tied directly into the future of CCBC's aviation and air traffic control. There is a new terminal building and classroom that's being constructed right now. And that's what the new construction is. The college is excited about that. The airport's excited about that. We're excited about that. We think it's a win-win-win for the area, but it's, it's a good facility. They don't have a whole lot of revenue generation from the small planes and that kind of stuff that takes off.
You have to rent one.
There's actually an event at CCBC this Saturday, Touch a Plane.
Yeah, the Touch a Plane is there. I've attended that in the past. I'll, that's one of me stopping by because it's not, not too far. The Military Expo that was there apparently was, was a good event. I know Tony, Dan and I were, were at that as well. We'll, we'll see if that's a continuing event. They may want to come back to Beaver County for that. It used to be held in Pittsburgh, but I think there's some advantages coming our way. And to the best of my knowledge, it, it went pretty well. I know the organizers were very appreciative of, of the assistance they got and, and how well it kind of fit the airport. So yeah, to me, it, it's a nice asset to have. Want to see it continue. And the community college with all of its workforce development, and especially these, these days with the demand for air traffic controllers and pilots who are aging out. CCBC's got pilots and air traffic controllers all around the world that have gone through that program over the years.
My wife was excited. She was, she was in the Air Force when, when she was very young and she got to meet a two-star general and got to talk with her. She was very excited about that.
Heard about that.
And my wife, who's very short, this general was shorter than her.
She was standing over in the back of a pickup truck when I saw her.
Yeah, no, she was short.
Have you heard anything from our neighbors in Allegheny County about the Pittsburgh International Airport? They had their trial runs. They had a couple, they wanted hundreds of people to be there at the same time to kind of go through the motions and see what.
We got invited to a ribbon cutting, tentative ribbon cutting, end of this week, next week?
The eleventh.
Are they, they announced a target date when they think?
Well, I think right after that, they're going to start. I, I know that Paul Hoback was quoted, the same Paul Hoback, a Beaver County resident, executive vice president, airport authority. But Saturday, the eleventh will be that, that ribbon cutting with a bunch of officials. I think like ten o'clock in the morning or nine o'clock in the morning, something. But they, they've said that not everything will be complete before they start, like some of the demolition, some of the old pathways.
They call that a soft opening?
All that kind of stuff, so. But I think most people are pretty, pretty excited about that. And I, you know, having toured that, it, it's exciting how they really wanted that to be a regional airport. And they have little tidbits from all around the region in that. The steel for some of the beams as you go through into the new terminal came from Beaver County.
Oh, cool.
It's formed that. You'll see, it's kind of, it kind of looks like branches of a tree, big trunks and stuff.
Yeah.
That is Beaver County steel. From Alva Amber Bridge. So little touches like that, that are pretty cool to really have some regional pride in this new international airport. Yeah, pretty exciting to see.
See a couple of you guys looking at your phones. Is there breaking news?
I'm looking for, I was looking for the email.
I couldn't find it.
Trying to get you the date.
Yeah, I've got it. Definitely October eleventh.
You know, you're always looking for a scoop, but we have, we do have to do a commercial break now. We'll come back with Ask the Commissioners.
Got kids? Too much to do? No time to cook? Download the McDonald's app today and get dinner delivered straight to your door from DoorDash. McDonald's makes it easy for you and your family. Download the app today and get exclusive deals and rewards. McDonald's, I'm loving it.
Are you into cars? Then listen up. Push Beaver County is presenting Garage Tours two point oh on Saturday, October eleventh, from seven thirty AM until the Tour de Beev four-person team endurance kart race at three PM. Falcone's Moon Township Ford will present a live broadcast by Beaver County Radio throughout the day. Frank Sparks and Gary Miller will be on the tour, checking in, and Curtis Walsh will be at Pit Race Broadcasting Live from the Moon Township Ford Broadcast Booth. You can register for Garage Tours two point oh by going to pushbeavercounty.org. The Beaver County Radio Live Broadcast from Garage Tours two point oh is being presented by Falcone's Moon Township Ford and is brought to you by Push Beaver County and Beaver County Radio.
NASCAR heads to Charlotte and the Roval.
The green flag is out. Ben Gibbsburg gets a big jump with Joey Logano in tow.
Austin Cinderg has turned around and Tyler Reddick got stuck behind him as the caution has come out.
AJ Allmendinger takes a shot to the outside. It's a three-way battle.
It's a victorious day for Kyle Larson. He will advance to the round of eight.
The Bank of America Roval four hundred, Sunday, October fifth at two PM.
Patriot Home Care is now hiring caregivers. Are you a caring and compassionate individual looking for a reliable income with benefits? Then call Patriot Home Care today. Benefits include health insurance, life insurance, paid vacation after one year, and one and a half times hourly pay for overtime plus holiday hours. Patriot Home Care employees provide personal care, conversation and companionship, medication reminders, light housekeeping and laundry, meal preparation and errands. Start your career in home care today and call Patriot Home Care at seven two four five zero six eight nine one one, or apply online at patriothomecare.org.
Remember way back when you were young and the bus ride to and from school set the tone for what made your day special? School buses and vans have had a special place in the Frye family for three generations. At Frye Transportation, the student transportation industry is embraced as a tradition, privilege and lifestyle. From the morning laughs on the way to school to the talk about the day on the way home. Memories you won't forget, just like the vintage football games aired each week on Beaver County Radio. Frye Transportation, caring for your children as they care for their own.
They say good things come in threes, and I can say it's true as far as reasons to visit Freedom United Federal Credit Union this month. This is Andy Dangle, Board Chairman. For starters, Freedom United will be celebrating International Credit Union Day on Thursday, October sixteenth, featuring free treats from the ice cream emergency truck in the parking lot at the Rochester office. It's also around this time of year, eighty-six years ago, that Freedom United Federal Credit Union was organized by a group of Freedom Oil Company employees. No, contrary to popular belief, I wasn't already on the board of directors back then. Finally, it's trick or treat month at Freedom United. Stop in anytime and get treated to some of the best loan rates around. The trick is deciding what to buy with your newfound cash. Loans are based on credit approval. See, good things do come in threes at Freedom United Federal Credit Union. Member NCUA, equal housing lender.
Take a quick look around your home. Chances are you may find you have a collection of unwanted household chemical products such as paints, automotive fluids, cleaning products and more. On the first Saturday of October, you can safely and properly dispose of these unwanted chemicals at a collection in Brady's Run Park. The event is hosted by Pennsylvania Resources Council and the Beaver County Recycling Center. A twenty-dollar fee covers the cost of disposing every ten gallons or fifty pounds of chemicals. Advanced registration is required for this collection on October fourth. View a complete list of acceptable materials at P R C dot org or call four one two four eight eight seven four nine zero. Many chemical products represent hazards to people and animals and require special methods for safe disposal. So gather all of your unwanted products and bring them to Brady's Run Park the first Saturday of October. Register today for this October fourth collection at P R C dot org or call four one two four eight eight seven four nine zero. That's P R C dot org or four one two four eight eight seven four nine zero.
Hey, it's Charlie and Debbie, along with NASCAR legend Kyle Petty, inviting you to join us for Kyle Petty's Back Then Again Country Countdown.
Each week, we'll put it in reverse and take a trip down memory lane, looking back at that week's top twenty country songs from years past.
We'll dive into what made those songs and artists move the needle, what pop culture trends made those years unique.
And you'll get to hear me tell stories only I can tell.
So don't miss Kyle Petty's Back Then Again Country Countdown right here each week.
Saturdays at noon, brought to you by Falcone's Moon Township Ford, the Latham team at EXP Realty, Canoe's Body Works and Beaver County Radio.
Lincoln Park Performing Arts Center in Midland opens its two thousand twenty-five, two thousand twenty-six season with the award-winning comedy classic Guys and Dolls, October third through the twelfth. Sponsored by Clearview Federal Credit Union. For tickets, visit lincolnparkarts.org.
St. Barnabas thanks you for listening to Beaver County Radio.
And we thank you as well. Broadcasting to you from the Frye Transportation Group studio, Scott Tate here, joined by Beaver County Commissioners Manning Amadeo and Camp. It is the monthly Ask the Commissioners. Phone lines open, seven two four eight four three one eight eight eight. And Jack, we were talking about a meeting. You have some details on it?
Yeah, that Southwest Planning Commission Public Participation Panel Meeting is October twenty-eighth from twelve to two at the Commissioner's Meeting Room at, at the courthouse. So anybody from the public or municipal officials are invited to come in and get their issues on traffic, bridge, construction, anything that they, that they want on, on the table and have a conversation. So there'll be Penn Dot people there, there'll be SBC people there, the commissioners will be there and, and some other, another planning and redevelopment folks. So it's, it's a good way to get your input heard to people and get them to move forward.
That's good to know that, that that planning begins in that fashion. So someone from a municipal, because Beaver County has about fifty-three municipalities or whatever, and I'm sure.
Fifty-three and a half.
Yeah, I always throw the half, that little slice of Elwood City.
One of them has a brand new sign. Have you seen the new sign that's going up in Amber Bridge on Route sixty-five? They have a new Welcome to Amber Bridge sign, Mario Leo and the Borough Manager's share. It looks really sharp.
Yeah, they've been working on that for a while.
And the new Brighton has its signs with the pumpkins and the cornstalks and everything, so time of year, but.
Well, I did see Ms. Val, Mayor McKelvey, yesterday. We had coffee with a cop at the courthouse as well. There was a big, big crowd there, a lot of police officers and other people who work with the police and the public coming up. And, and the mayor, McKelvey, was, was there as well as, not surprisingly sporting her new Brighton gear.
Lion pride.
She's Energizer Bunny. I'll tell you, she's everywhere.
She's one of our monthly guests as well.
I know.
All right. So this time of year, October, you know, what, what happens in county government-wise? What are the priorities shifting to? I know the budget we've said is, hopefully that gets settled someday soon. But what else are you guys looking at as winter's coming? What are the priorities, like preparing for road salt or what are you, what are you up to?
We only have five roads.
Okay.
Sixty-two bridges, but we have five, five roads.
We, we have that stuff in place. I mean, for the most part, until we get the budget done, we're kind of keeping our powder dry. We're not, you know, not initiating any new capital projects or anything right now. Stuff's kind of sitting there until we understand the budget, the budget ramifications and what we're dealing with going into, into next year. So it's kind of, kind of quiet.
Although our parking garage is a disaster right now.
Yeah. What's, is there a target date from when that is back in action?
In December.
Yeah, end of the year.
And they're on, and we give monthly weekly reports from Dan Coolville. We got invited, is it next Friday or this?
Uh, this Friday, every Friday.
Every Friday they meet, but this Friday they invite us to do a walkthrough. They're, they're on time.
Yep.
I mean, we've had good weather for it, so we haven't had any issues.
No excuses.
Yeah.
For that. But other than that project, like I said, everything else, any new construction, any new initiatives, we have it.
They're taking dumpsters and dumpsters of concrete out of there.
What's it ultimately going to look like? What, what will the difference be when it's?
They're just reinforcing it.
It's mainly cosmetic.
Okay.
Reforcing some damage that's been done over the years with salt, salt runoff, drainage issues and the like. So it's, it's pretty much, I don't know that anything's been done to it. So the repainting, where paint's peeling off and they're redoing concrete work and replacing rebar where it needs to be replaced. It's structurally sound.
People visiting the courthouse, the recommendation, just on-street parking, because for a while there was like permanent parking years ago. I don't know if that was still a thing.
Yeah, no, it's come early and prepare to walk. Pretty much, you know, Beavers.
Support a local business as you're walking to your, yeah, I get that.
But, but so far, I think people have been able to manage it. They know about it. And we, we haven't gotten any complaints for quite some.
Right next to the courthouse, I was glad to see, I finally saw that little park stage being used for the Beaver Wine Fest. They had a, a performance right after that. I've been wondering when that stage was going to see some action.
Yeah, they were planning that for several years and it seemed like it took a while to get there and put some electricity and stuff, but it looks like Beaver's starting to utilize it now.
Yeah.
Those parks are utilized a lot.
The gazebo park, we always see things there.
Events over there. It's nice for us. We can walk right across, especially for some things that happen during, during the day there.
And how about as far as parks and recreation in the county, anything coming up? I, I guess we didn't have the, it used to be called the Festival of Trees last year. And any word of that ever being brought back to life?
Unfortunately, I, I, I think it's another one of those cases where some of the people involved with that kind of aged out and the ability to fundraise became more and more difficult. And I haven't heard the latest, but it sounds like there won't be one this.
Yeah, we were never directly involved. We supported it.
Right.
Yeah.
And CYS was involved in some other, other agencies that were benefiting from that. But yeah, I don't know what's going to happen there. I mean, we, we had another successful triathlon a couple of weeks ago. There were, was further, one of the schools came from TCU, was one of them and different things. So it was a collegiate triathlon and they still love that facility. That's their third or fourth year coming back there. And the junior one that was done in June. So we're still having those kinds of events. I'm not sure what the next major event is, but I will tell you, again, the lodge gets booked continuously through the fall for weddings and fundraiser events and all, all kinds of stuff.
We're still resting from Boom and the concert, the den and tourism put on.
But we, we continue to maintain brush creeks in, in, in good shape. Doing some good work there. Economy. We'll have some decisions to make on the economy pool next year.
That seems to be come up every year. Feature of that status.
Liner issue. And so we, we'll go through that. But those are kind of decisions we'll make after we understand the budget and what things look like.
You mentioned Beaver County Boom, the pressure's on next year. You mentioned Beaver County Boom. The pressure's on next year, the two hundred and fiftieth anniversary.
Yeah.
Of the country. Everyone's already saying it's gonna be, Zambelli's on record saying it's gonna be the biggest and best fireworks he's ever done, so.
Dr. Zambelli, I tell you, last year at the Boom, I know these guys were watching at other places, but he was actually out behind the stage putting fireworks up himself for the fireworks that were displayed behind the, the main stage. He was yelling at people and getting them out of there and putting them up himself. It was a sight to see, I'll tell you, for, for a man of his age to be able to still.
We were still controlling the situation.
I was down by the river. He was staying, he walked up and stood by it, by me and my family.
Yeah.
And I saw the little boy in him looking at the fact of all those years and he still was intrigued by it.
He was bummed out though about the cloud cover.
Yeah.
Because some, some of his.
Yeah, Jack was here too.
It's one thing you can't control.
But that'll probably be something you'll be able to talk to with the Commissioners and tourism and their marketing for over the next couple of months on what their plans are for PA two fifty. Cause I know they're, the, the committee that they formed have been meeting monthly and they have a lot of plans, whether it comes to a parade, boom, supporting the municipalities with grants for their, for, give them some funding.
Bush is unbelievable.
Oh, they do great work.
Unbelievable work.
I'm sure I'll see some of you. I'm, I'm the MC for the Veterans Parade.
Yeah, the Veterans Parade coming up. I saw, saw Larry yesterday.
Yeah, Larry was at the coffee with the cop as well.
Yeah, and he, he's pleased to be able to bring it to Beaver and through there and the cooperation he's kept from the Borough and the county to, to have the Veterans Parade there. That should be a pretty, pretty nice event.
I've been pushing for years for a big New Year's Eve event in Beaver County. We even have a name for it, New Year's Beeve. You know, rather than everyone driving down to Pittsburgh, Push Beaver County has been talking about that. We've been collaborating. What do you think?
Beaver's the only one that, the Borough of Beaver is the only one that puts on, I think, anything significant on New Year's, don't they? I think they've had fireworks or some stuff.
New York used to raise a big apple. Now it's like a big dime or whatever. Just places like Port Clinton, Ohio, they raise a big fish. We, we would just raise a big beaver or have it drop, stroke at midnight. What do you think?
Have a beaver gnawing at a tree and when the tree keels over.
It falls over. Genius.
All right, I'm with you, Scott. We got something here.
All right, folks. And the minute or so we have left, anything else you want people to know as far as what the county commissioners are up to or?
No, I, I just, you know, I, I think it's a testament to the good government, the governance that we've provided, that we're not in dire straits like some of the other counties with all these budget crises. I think it's a fact that we have kept taxes low. We have minded our budget. We've, we've handled our head count well. But we can't achieve anything without, you know, good things and accomplish things without the greatness of others. And we, we have some awesome county employees and department heads and, and everything else. And a lot of the success the county's had, I don't think they get enough credit, the Tony Cautories and the Dan Coolvilles and the different people. And you, you know, getting into the behavioral health, Lisa McCoy and all, all that stuff. I go to these events, these recovery walks and stuff. And we, we have so many great people out there. The Youth Ambassador Program. That, that's a testament to the great people we have surrounding us that help the county get the rec, even the broadband thing. That happened with the greatness of others pulling that together. We get some of the credit sometimes that, you know, quite frankly.
And when we show up, when we show up at places, they're so appreciative. They're, they're just laid up when they see us.
We heard that from one of our callers earlier today. He's appreciating that you guys, politics doesn't seem to get in the way of county government doing this.
There's a, there's a whole bunch of people behind the scenes that, that are doing an awesome job for us.
We get that to trickle up to the state legislators.
Yeah.
Maybe we'll be getting somewhere.
I'm not holding my breath.
I got a strange feeling. Next year at this time, we're gonna be in the same situation.
Oh, could be. All right, we'll see. Well, gentlemen, I do appreciate you coming in for another installment.
Thank you.
Thanks, man.
Yes, yes. You'll take care. Thank you all for the.